Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Coling.
Here.
Mr. Robke.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Present. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based on the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on January 8th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There is one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to an absence, there are only six members present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to three will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. That next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is February 6th. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
Our first case is 2018-Z-53, 819 Michigan Avenue. The request had been continued to tonight from a previous meeting. The applicant had a conflict and was not able to make it tonight, so it is being requested to continue to December 19th, please.
Do you have a motion to continue the case?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schneider, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is 2018-Z-52, 620 Forest Avenue. This is a request for a 0.33-foot fence pier diameter variation to permit the reconstruction of two fence pillars.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. Joy Pickens from 620 Forest Avenue. I just prepared a little narrative here, and I think it's going to be brief, so I don't know if you got the cover letter or not, so...
We did.
Basically, we're requesting permission to reinstate two brick fence pillars at the entrance to our house. The pillars were on the property from 1911 to 1989. We removed them in 89 because they were in disrepair and expensive to replace. They were not in the budget at that time. The pillars were an architectural feature in the original plan but also functional. Our front door is recessed from the front of the house, and it's hard to see from the west side, so the pillars drew your eye to the front of the house and gave you an idea of which the two sidewalks led to our front door. After the pillars were removed, we addressed this issue by putting in a garden at the bottom and making the sidewalk bigger, and it served us for quite a while. But we have a Norway maple in the parkway that has kind of taken over and has made it really difficult for grass or plantings to grow around there. So I decided to take out the garden and thought, "Well, we're just going to put the pillars right back in." And then I went to get a permit to get footings for the pillars and found out that I'm just a little bit short. The pillars that we want to put in are going to match an existing pillar on the house that's at the base of the front steps, as well as the original plan, the two pillars that were at the end of the sidewalk. Those pillars had a 24-by-24-inch base and a 22-inch column, hence I needed a 24-inch footing. For that, I need 20,000 square feet in my lot size, and I have 18,600. So I'm just short of that. What I wanted to add is that, like, over the years, we've done a lot of renovation on the house and tried to keep everything updated and restored while being very sensitive to the original character. And we've actually been recognized a couple times by the village for the work on the house. So in keeping with the spirit of where we've gone with this house, we'd like to go ahead and make the pillars match the original pillars and be consistent in size with the existing pillar on the front of the house. As such, they would be the 24-inch footing and a 22-inch column. Also, we have an existing hedge around the house, and we would like the pillars to be the endpoints on that hedge. Visually, they should be in line with the hedge. It would be kind of out of proportion if they weren't. We have, addressing some of the points in the 20.4, whatever, we have a double lot. There is no impact on adjacent dwellings or use of neighboring yards. There's significant airspace and space between the buildings. The proposed pillars would be made of the exact brick of the house. We have some leftover from other work we've done on the house. And we believe they'll be in character with the house and the neighborhood.
Aye. Great. Any questions for our applicant?
I think you've done a great job, an amazing job, with the restoration.
Oh, thank you.
Looking at the pictures, the before and after, I don't know how. You had all the old drawings, I guess?
We did. We do. We still do. And the specs to back them up.
So I just have a question. So that porch that was enclosed, that you removed the windows? Was that heated? Was that...how was that spaced?
When we moved in, there was a radiator there, and we took that out because the original plan for the house was an open porch, as we have it now. Over the years, it got enclosed and got used as living space.
I just wanted to ask about that, because usually people go the other way.
I know.
They want to capture as much...
But it was such a cool feature. We thought we needed to just follow through with it.
That's great. And one other thing, I guess, your request is small. You know, it's basically going from an 18-inch to a 22-inch?
Well, the column's 22-inch. The footings, the limestone footing, will be 24, and the cap on the column will be 24.
Any other questions?
Well, I think that's all in the original.
It's...everything's in the property line within...you got it.
Any other questions? No? All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Seeing no one...oh, yeah?
We are for it. We are for it.
[laughing].
All right. If you want to speak, you need to come up and speak into the microphone. You have to introduce yourself.
Jessica Corey. We are at 611 Forest, who are neighbors with Joy and Scott. You know, we agree. We think it's going to look great. We think it would add beauty to the street, and it would look great on their property with their, you know, with their home. It would go nicely with their overall aesthetic of their home.
All right.
So we are in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Yes?
I have a question for the applicant. Did you say the cap would be 24?
Yeah.
Does the variation need to reflect that it's 24 inches in dimension, not 22?
We were looking at just the width of the pillar, not the cap. We generally haven't treated the cap as a separator. Yeah, I mean...
Didn't want a technicality, too.
Me neither. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the case? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case. I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board that would like to make a motion. Mr. Coling, thanks a lot.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 0.33-foot fence pier diameter variation to permit the construction of two fence pillars at 620 Forest Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Robke, thank you very much. Mr. Coling?
Yeah. First of all, it's, one, it's replacing former columns that were there. Two, it's a minimal request. Three, you know, it's restoration that's being done to kind of continue in the character of the home, so I think it meets the standards of review, and I have no problem supporting it.
Thank you. Ms. Robke?
I think it's sort of the opposite normally. We'll look at a hardship. I'm not sure there's a...the hardship is you're trying to do the right thing and really restore this feature to the building, and the ordinance doesn't let you. I completely support it.
All right. Any other comments? No?
Property's almost conforming, or the size of the lot is...
Yep.
Almost allows us to be conforming.
Yep. Anybody else?
No. I felt the same way. Really minimal request, and, you know, a great job of restoring the house and the property, so absolutely appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Very welcome. All right. Why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation of the Village Board. The meeting, I've forgotten already, January 6th, is that right? January 8th? You might want to attend. It's in the same room. I believe their meeting starts at 7:00. It'll be on their consent agenda. I doubt anybody's going to pull it off, so it'll be at the very beginning of the meeting when they vote yes one time for everything on the agenda, so...
All right.
I do need you to come up and sign one of these letters, though, just acknowledging the dates and your presence, and you can take the other one with you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2018-Z-52.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is 2018-Z-54, 611 Forest Avenue. This is a request for a variation to permit a parking space in a required front yard, a five-foot side yard parking space setback variation, and a variation to modify a non-conforming accessory structure, a detached garage.
Hello. Welcome.
Jessica Corey, 611 Forest Avenue.
Peter Corey, 611 Forest Avenue. Thank you for reviewing our file and visiting our house and for inviting us here to discuss this case. Appreciate it very much. What we're trying to do is in our file is, the garage we have is, we think, the original garage dates from the early 20th century, but it doesn't have currently access to the alley. We think at one point it did. There's a kind of a cutout, and our architect thinks it might have been for a horse and buggy at that time. It's, you know, it dates that old. We would like to remodel, restore the garage, but add access to the alley, which is more contemporary and which is common in Willmet, particularly East Willmet. Most people with the alley have access to it, which, you know, helps reduce vehicular traffic on the streets. So we would remove the...or sorry, remodel garage and add alley access. In conjunction with that, we would like to simply maintain the existing access to Forest Avenue that we have from the front driveway that has a curb cut on Forest Avenue. So that's respectfully what we're asking here, an exception for that. Forest Avenue, 611, you know is very close in proximity to the beach, the public Gilson Beach, as well as Chestnut and Elmwood and other beaches, and so throughout the summer, there's cars from out of town parked on the street quite frequently and making it very hard for street parking on Forest Avenue, particularly on the weekends. So for us or for visitors, it's very difficult often to find parking. That's particularly difficult for older people. My parents are 81, and they live in Glenview, and they come visit their grandkids, and parking down the street or further away would be difficult for them. In addition, Michigan Shores is very close, and they use the forest all the time for valet parking. So not just in the summer, but on any given weekend, when there's an event or just a busy night, cars lined up even at night along Forest, parked on the street, making it difficult to find parking on the street. You know, that's one of the reasons why we're just, again, hoping to maintain the existing access to Forest Avenue. The driveway we have now on the side of the house is very tight. We have four children. My wife drives a somewhat larger car, and she can barely get back to the garage from the driveway. We've scraped the side of the fence a few times. It's just not conducive to driving a car back there. I don't think it was ever made for the type of cars people drive today. So we would actually remove the asphalt in that area and plant, and put grass so that the driveway wouldn't go all the way through. It would just stop, you know, near the front of the house. So we think this will actually enhance the community for a few reasons. One, as we mentioned, right now, our only access to the driveway or the garage is on Forest. By opening up the back, the garage to the back alley, that will be our main access to park our car, so it'll reduce vehicular traffic on Forest, which, because of the amount of families that live there and the cars parked on the street, we think is a benefit. We're also going to remove, you know, between 700 and 900 square feet of asphalt and plant grass. So now we're replacing impervious surface with grass, which we think will improve drainage, which is also somewhat of a problem in that area. It floods easily. The street floods frequently. You know, what we're asking for, we think, is consistent with the use of the house. Again, we're asking only to maintain the front part of the driveway while modifying the garage to allow alley access, which is predominant majority of people have in East Willmet, and we think it's consistent with the community. I'll note that 509 Forest, 525 Forest, 519 Forest, and 616 Lake, which is directly behind our alley, you know, we share an alley. It's our back neighbor, we call it, all have the same configuration where they have access from the street, a driveway that goes all the way through. In some cases, it goes all the way through from the street through to the alley, so there would be, I guess, through traffic potential. We're simply asking for a smaller portion in the front parking pad. So, you know, in our opinion, it's beneficial to the community. You know, when we bought the house, it had the curb cut, which we thought was a source of value, and my wife's a Realtor, and she thinks that's part of the value. And so if we had to open up the garage but lose the curb cut, it's sort of an even swap, and it's not, it wouldn't be worth the investment for us. That's part of the conundrum. So we want to do something that benefits the community, but we can't do it if it's going to, if it will, you know, be a detriment to us in terms of what we paid, you know, what we bought the house for and the value we create or detract from it. Finally, I think we haven't had any objections from any of the neighbors. As I mentioned, there's several houses in the area that have a similar configuration, and we do have one letter of support from Mike Hen, who lives on the corner of Sixth and Forest. I think it's in the file, who wrote in support of this request. I don't know if I missed anything or...
Let's go to the next one.
Yeah, so...
We're going to start asking some questions.
So you intend to replace the existing garage? Yes?
Well, I think we're going to remodel it. It's very old. It needs a new floor.
Or configure it such that you have access for the alley?
Correct.
So can you, if you look at 1.6, which shows the garage, I guess, the outline of the garage, right? What is the purpose, now that you are closing the driveway from Forest, what is the purpose of all of that asphalt that today is used to get into the garage? Do you see that? What are you going to do with...
You're saying right here?
Yes.
That's already there.
I understand. What is the use? What will be its use?
Oh...
Because the cars won't get there, right?
The cars won't get there...
Probably just for the basket where the kids play. I mean, just like...
So, sorry to interrupt, but the garage, I thought, maybe was double-sided with doors.
Well, we haven't really decided. We had thought of having maybe one door on this side.
Yeah. Get their stuff out.
There'll certainly be a door, but whether it's a door large enough for a vehicle, we haven't really made that determination.
Not that far, but...
Yeah, so it's possible that that would be additional parking, but more likely, this would just be a play area for the kids, I guess. Again, we would leave it as just a different surface for them to play on or ride their bikes.
I have a question for Lisa, and then I'm done. If they open the garage to the alley, and whether or not they maintain the driveway with asphalt or grass or other kinds of paving material, what is the issue? Because it can still access the garage from the front, from Forest, right?
No.
Why? No?
Well, we take out the driveway that goes from Forest all the way to the garage right now, that strip. We would take most of that out, like the side...
I understand. I understand that, but what they...can you, let's just assume you don't take the grass out for a second.
Okay.
And you're just asking for access to the garage from the alley?
Correct.
Would there be a variation required?
If the driveway remained from Forest to the garage?
Yes.
They would not have a parking space variation. The garage would still need relief to be modified, but the parking variations would go away.
So the setback...
What would the garage variation be?
To modify a non-conforming structure. It's a little too close to the lot line.
It's a little too close.
Putting the doors in is a structural modification.
But for the fact that they're putting grass for a stretch of it there, it becomes a variation to put a car in the front yard.
Front yard setback.
Yeah, I think we would be willing to just leave it as is. I don't, maybe we misunderstood or got bad advice.
That's right.
We thought it would be more beneficial because we'd be removing impervious ground, so we actually did that, we thought, I guess, in error, that it would be a benefit of doing that. If it's easier to not do that, I think we're fine leaving it as is.
Yeah, but the question that would come to you, if you're going to flop the door to the alley, what do you need the driveway for? If we're going to give you the variance to modify the garage to put a door on the alley side, well, what do you need?
Well, we don't need it, but we think, closing the curb cut, we think, would reduce the value that we paid for the house. And so in our judgment, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't really do one unless we could, we wouldn't remodel the garage unless we can maintain the value we think you get from the curb cut, so...
Sure. Let me ask you a question. Why? Why is there...
Because driving through...
Why is there increased value if you have the curb cut where you can park one car in the front yard as opposed to having the whole driveway?
I think what they're saying is it's value to have one space.
Right. So...
One or two spaces.
I don't know if this turns on the value question.
I know it doesn't.
Right. I think it's turning on the convenience.
Yeah.
And the logic of having parking. That's what it's turning on, so I think we're getting stuck on this value question.
Right. I just, I'm like, value has...
Just so you know, valuation is not a consideration.
Yeah, no. I was just explaining that we wouldn't, I thought the question was...
We just want to reduce. And we also don't, with all the cars, because of Gilson, I mean, when we first moved here, we didn't realize, we moved a year ago, how many cars were on the street, just, we had no idea, because we'd never lived that close to the beach before. And with Michigan Shores as well, it's just, it's, even like Fourth of July, you can't even get out hardly. I mean, it's just so much, all summer long, and then Michigan Shores is more like all year long when they have big events, and now the beach is closed or renovating it. So it's just becoming, I mean, it's just one of those things where I'm so happy we do have the driveway in the front. It's nice to have that, and, you know, some of the homes have it, some don't have it. So we would like to make, we don't want to get rid of that. That is a value we have.
How many? I'm assuming you're planning on...
21 feet. And so do...
Yeah. I just want to make it clear, your goal really is just to get garage doors on the other side.
That's right. And I was only bringing up the value to answer what I thought was implied question. Well, why don't you just open the garage? If you open the garage, why do you need the Forest access? And that, the reason why we need that is that we think we'd be hurting the value of our house if we didn't have that.
So really, your request is the garage doors?
Basically.
And what our role is, is to approve or disapprove, because if you're going to, if you're going to build it new, then you have to follow...
No, the request is the garage doors.
And the parking.
And a parking space.
But the main, the main, I guess, I know that's the request, but their main goal was to get the garage doors.
Yeah, that was, I guess, we filed, I think, had we known, I'm not sure who requested this, the architect, I think, but yeah. The main goal is to get alley access from the garage, and if we can leave the driveway as is and get alley access garage, I think we're fine with that as well. Again, we thought it would be looked unfavorably by reducing the amount of driveway. If that's wrong, then we can...
Do we have a, do we have a final number? I know you mentioned between 700 and 900, but it seems like it's more. Do we have a final number on the pervious surface that's being removed?
Yes. What's the final? We have it on page.
Well, it was 190 in the front and 694 on the side. If we, you know, these plans are preliminary, but the plans in the packet are, who's good but the plans in the packet are, who's good at math? 190 plus 694.
196 plus 694.
Yeah, so 890, 890 square feet.
So nine, almost 1,000 square feet of impervious surface is being removed with this request.
And they're being penalized for doing that.
Right.
Oh, they're not.
How? Because they could tear down the existing garage, make it conforming, keep the existing driveway all the way from Forest to the back, and have no variation. But as I understand it...
They'd have to take out some of the existing driveway in the back in order to be conforming? Yeah, look, it's non-conforming right now. It's not, it's gotta move. So therefore, some of this driveway's gotta come out in order to move the garage into a conforming location.
That's right.
Right.
They have to put it in a conforming location, three feet from the property line, whatever.
If they tore it down and replaced it with a new garage.
And, and they could keep the existing driveway and have no variation requirement. What they're doing is, which I think is a good thing, is they're saying, look, we're taking much of that driveway and turning it into a lawn, into absorbent turf. And, but because we're now making it an unusable driveway from Forest to the garage, we are, we now have to get a variation for the part of the drive from Forest, the 21 feet that allows them to park there. And it seems to me that makes, why are we penalizing someone? Or, I'm not saying we are going to, but that should not, that should be a positive rather than a detriment.
It's not a driveway anymore, it's a parking space.
Right.
I have a question for Lisa and staff or anybody else who might know the answer to this. Michigan shores parking, are they charging money to park people's cars on the public street?
No, it's just like tipping.
I don't think so, they do not.
Yeah, tip the guy for, they don't charge.
They don't charge a valet fee, it's just tipping.
Yeah, I think it's free, though.
You just tip the guy. Any other questions for our applicant to stay out of discussion right now?
To Lisa really quick, or you can answer this question because it, the leaf parking restrictions were up, and I didn't see what the normal parking restrictions are. What is parking? What are the, is there a restriction?
Just the normal leaf and weather.
Two inches of snow.
Is there no overnight, is it overnight?
I don't think there's any overnight variance. And it is parking on both sides of the street. On the next block east, I believe, there's no parking on the north side. You can park on the south side. On our block, it changes so that you can park on both sides.
Parking on both sides?
Yeah, just leave, pickup, snow, standard. And again, the other, you know, I'm not sure where this falls in the application, but the benefit, I think, to us, because it's easier, it's easier to not have to use Forest because of the congestion, but I think it's a benefit to the community if, you know, there's fewer cars driving on Forest, which would be the case if we had access, garage access to the alley. So to us, it's kind of a win-win, but...
So I have a question, Lisa. Regarding the garage, and there's no proposal about the renovation of the garage? So we don't really have a plan that we're approving or accepting? I mean, is this, maybe they've done a great job with the landscape, you know, work. Do we need to have? Like, I would like to know if there's gonna be a door on the, on the north side of the garage.
It says they're adding a door. It doesn't say anything's being removed. We don't have a plan for it, we don't have a...
Yeah, the request started out as just being for the driveway, so we don't have the plan for the garage.
All right, are there any other questions for our applicant?
I guess if, if their intent is, and Lisa, if they state that they're gonna use their existing one and put a standard door on, or if they state any of that, can we then amend the request? So they don't need to come back again? You know, if they said, we're gonna use the existing, you know, concrete slab or poured exactly the same, put on a standard two-car garage on the alley, and then, you know, I don't think it matters to our committee if they have doors on the other side.
It does to me.
Why is that?
Changes the use of that area.
Because the use of that area is more parking.
Okay, but, but if they're not...
Also, we don't, without a plan and without elevations of how they're gonna modify this garage, I mean, that's normally something that people on this board comment on.
Yeah, but we have to let them know what we think, what we expect from them.
In plan. If somebody's asking to modify a structure, and we're approving modifying a structure, should be very well defined what's being modified.
Do you have any more of the details on what's gonna...
I mean, we were just gonna look at restoring, restoring it. We've talked to, like, Danley and other places, but I think we'd rather try to keep the current garage, at least the height and everything, the way that it is, and just get somebody in there to, you know, make it a little bit better. I think right now, we were just assuming it was one, the one door on the one side. And then, I don't know, we hadn't really talked about the other side. We're gonna maybe put windows or maybe try to make it look nice.
So can I ask the committee a question? If we were only applying for a garage and not a parking spot, we're leaving the driveway, would it still matter if we had doors on both sides of the garage?
I think to a couple of the board members it would.
Even if it was a driveway and not a car park?
I think it would matter not to have plans of what we're being asked to approve and adequate definition. So I wouldn't want to speculate on whether it matters to me because I'm not sure what we're being asked to approve.
I have another question. So how many cars do you have? Two, Lisa?
Two.
You don't have to say, but at least two, right? So, so a typical day, you park both cars in your garage at the end of the day?
Now?
Yeah.
No. Now we can, it's very difficult to get back there. It's cumbersome.
So it's either, I'm assuming it's either on the street or in the, in that drive?
Tandem in the driveway where we would have still access, or on the street, correct.
Right, or on the street when you, when you can.
Right.
You know, Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah.
Hot days.
Right, not in the summer. Not on the summer weekends, for sure. But yes, when there's availability on the street. You know, like, for example, we had people, well, it doesn't matter. Like I said, when we have visitors, my 81-year-old mother walks from down the street. That's not ideal. I understand, that's not, but, right. Tandem in the driveway or on the street when the street's available.
Right, so, so you would have to move your cars from tandem position to either both all the way farther back in the driveway or in the garage when your parents come home, come over? Or you have to pull them out to pull one car out to leave space for someone to come in if there's no spots on the street.
Right, generally, we pull one out and then park down around the corner or wherever, right?
Okay, so when you rehab your garage and you'll have access off the alley, are you gonna start using it for your cars?
Yeah, so that would be the, the point would be we would park in the garage. Okay, so again, we're reducing vehicular traffic on Forest, so we're using alley access, no longer Forest access, so...
What's the depth, like, what's the required depth for a parking spot? Like, if you had, you know, in the parking lot?
In a parking lot, it's eight by eighteen by eight or nine by.
Yeah.
Eighteen.
All right, are there any other questions for our applicant?
I don't, can I ask one more question?
Feel free.
If this is denied, can we reapply with, with just leaving the driveway and apply just for the garage?
Absolutely. But...
They don't have to wait a certain amount of time?
Well, it'd be February 6th is the next available date.
But you don't have to wait a long, okay.
Right?
So procedurally, if the zoning board were to make a negative recommendation this evening, and the issue was clearly the driveway versus the garage, what you could do then is go to the village board and present the whole case to them and see what they say. There is a restriction that if a case is denied by the village board, the same request can't be made within 365 days. But they're not trying to, like, catch you. So they would indicate, you know, this part is, was probably okay, this part is not. Do you want to amend your request? And so they would give you the opportunity to maybe remove the request that was probably not supported so that you're not in the bag for that particular part. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you.
That would be January 8th.
Okay.
Question, Lisa, is there, I think part of the issue is we have incomplete information. Is there any procedure that would allow us to table this to get complete information to sort of avoid that, the risk of that cycle?
Sure, if the zoning board and the applicant agree that additional information could be provided, the zoning board could table it if the applicant's amenable to that, sure.
Right, I mean, the other reason, well, there's an expense to getting full blown plans for a remodel of the garage. And I think maybe we were, I don't know why we don't have plans, but we were trying to make sure we could do it before we took those steps. But if it needs to go the other way, you know, we can do that as well.
But you would, really, I think, depending upon what you're doing, I mean, if you're just, you're not changing the box, so to speak, right? What we'd look for really are renderings of what the exterior would look like so that we're aware. Because that's all you're, okay, so you're gonna change some supports, you're gonna change, but you're not changing the roof. You're just, really what you're looking at is the north and the south face. And if you're doing anything else to the, to the envelope of the garage. So it's not full blown plans, but it would be bringing in an architect to give you a rendering of what you're anticipating to do. Would that be sufficient?
I think it's a question for everybody. I just don't understand what the request is, you know.
Right. So you understand what his point is?
It could be a photograph saying we're only adding a door in this area if that communicates it properly.
Is the question, it seems to me the question is, are we gonna have access, a door on the back of the garage and the alley side?
Well, to a certain extent, that is. But, but what's more important for us is when you listen to how we approve something, we approve something in accordance with the plan submitted. All right, well, we don't have any plans for the garage. We don't really know what you're gonna do to it. So how can we approve what you're gonna do?
Can I ask a question?
And then, once you tell us what you're gonna do, then it starts getting into, all right, door front, door back, you know, that, then it... But we just, we gotta know.
Can I ask a question for Lisa? If they keep the envelope of the garage as is, and the only thing they're going to do is put doors to the alley to allow access of two cars, would that require a variation?
Yes, that is what this request is based on. The understanding that they were gonna be adding doors on the alley side.
But what would be the variation that, all they're doing to that?
Is it because it's not a conforming structure?
Right, yeah.
So they, what can they do to that non-conforming structure, if anything, without a variation request?
Maintenance, repair, yeah.
They can't put doors on it?
Not new doors, because that would be a structural modification.
They can't put doors to an alley?
So it would seem that the best thing for them is to work with Lisa and maybe table it for now instead of not getting a...
Well, I mean, look, at the end of the day, they're putting garage, they're not moving the garage.
Yeah.
They're putting doors on the other side to access the alley. They're taking out 1,000 square feet of concrete and creating impervious surface. And because they're doing that, which they don't have to do, they now have a variation that they need for a parking pad in the front yard. It looks to me like it's a big win, win, to let them do what they want to do.
Yeah.
As opposed to... Well, what I was about to suggest, and I think Lisa procedurally can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but, you know, let's say you get, you know, a positive recommendation, or even if it's three to three, you know, and the comments are, well, I can't approve this because I don't know what you're doing with the garage, is the negative comments. Between now and the January 8th board meeting, you can get some renderings of the garage and then come and say, because it's a negative recommendation, you're gonna be called up and have to present your plans. You can say, well, the major argument against what we wanted was we didn't have drawings, so here's our drawings, this is what we want to do. And then the board could vote in favor, overturn our recommendation then, correct?
Procedurally, that is possible, yes.
Okay.
And just to go back to your opening comments, the board would need five, that board would need five of seven?
If you got a negative recommendation. So if it goes three, three, it's negative because it's six of us.
Right.
All right, and then you'd need a five-two vote on their end. And keep in mind that our role as the zoning board of appeals is to interpret our zoning code and try to, as strict as we see it, apply them and then make the recommendation. Village board, you know, they're taking a view from 20,000 feet, you know? And so oftentimes, they may overturn something that we say just because, oh, this is good for the neighborhood, or, you know.
Do you know when the house was built?
1914.
1914? Do you know if the garage was built the same time as the house?
We think it was.
90% more information is that it was, yeah.
Our contractor, he thinks it was, yeah.
All right, and there's no reason to believe that the garage was moved at any time after it was constructed, you know, in the 50s or 60s?
No.
I mean, I honestly, I don't know for sure, but we have not seen any information.
But you didn't do anything to...
We didn't, and the previous owner didn't.
Been there since...
I don't know, the owner before the previous owner, I don't know. But I, it doesn't appear, based on how it looks, it doesn't appear it's been moved.
Got it, and Lisa, just to be sure, was I reading right? I just want to make sure it's .21 foot, too close to the lot line?
Yeah, if you look at the Plaid of Survey, it's got a 2.79 foot southwest side yard setback, and three feet is the minimum.
Right, so 2.1 feet, so it's like, what, four inches?
Okay. Our job is to kind of go through the code and vet and then prepare the information for the village to vote on. And I think my feeling, my gut feeling would be if you go to the village with a plan, doesn't have, I don't think it has to be that elaborate, and you say you're reusing the structure, and you're, you know, in addition, you're gonna take out that grass, I don't have a problem with that front parking space because you're not asking to put a new one there, you just have it, so...
It says 18.33, but on their drawing, it says 21 feet. And 18.3 is?
On the private property.
So the sidewalk is not the property line, all right.
Sorry, Lisa, one more question. If it were three feet rather than 2.79 feet, would it, that would be conforming?
Yes.
Could they then put doors in the alley?
Yes.
So because of the four, the four inches?
Is the reason they're here.
Conforming is that they cannot put doors without a variation request?
Right, that's what's...
But unfortunately, they're non-conforming, so they need to submit plans.
I got it, I got it, I got it. I'm just trying to clarify.
I should clarify, we don't know the height of the structure. I'm assuming that it is otherwise conforming in height and, you know, all the requirements.
I got it.
Any other questions for our applicant?
Nope.
All right, anything else you want to add? No, all right, I'm gonna see if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against the case. Please come on up, you guys can have a seat.
I'd be happy to speak in favor of it.
I'd be happy to speak in favor of it, the parking is an issue on the block. As far as how long the garage has been around, we knew the last people, they've forty years now, that have lived there, the garage was there when they were there. And the Brennans, that two people back from you, always wanted to do this, they always wanted to reverse the door on that garage, because it is a tiny space going between the fence and the existing house on that driveway.
Yeah, I'm Scott Pickens. Backing out of that driveway has always been an issue. I think Melanie, who was there for about twenty years, lost a few mirrors. From my perspective, like what John said, you know, even if nothing changes and they kept the big garage door, it's a plus to recover the green space, and it's great to get the traffic off the street. And I think it's particularly dangerous, given the intensity of the parking there on that side of the street, and mostly in the summer, when you have your folks come over to visit, it is literally like bumper to bumper, where people are parking to try and get their, get down to the beach. And, and also, I think it's safer to be loading, unloading people, you know, off there with the amount of traffic, not to mention, I mean, occasionally even, you know, July fourth. And the point, you know, the question about the extra space in the front, or whatever, there is a new house on the next block that did put in the exact same thing. They have a little parking spot in the front, which I think is great, I mean, you pull up, you don't have to worry about getting your, you know, doors ripped off or what have you. We always park in the back, but I think anything that gets, you know, stuff off the street is great.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the case and ask if there's a member of the board that wants to make motion.
Mr. Robkey, your motion?
Hang on, can, oh yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Case two thousand eighteen Z fifty-four, move to recommend granting a request for
Guys can have a seat.
Variation to permit a parking space in a required front yard and a five-foot side yard parking space setback variation at six eleven Forest Avenue in accordance with plans submitted.
All right, so I have a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Boyer, second. Mr. Robkey, your motion?
Uh, my first question doesn't say anything about the garage modification.
Sorry, you're looking at...
The structure.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the motion?
On the motion.
Oh, that...
Does it cover everything?
Uh, no, it should be...
The, the garage modification should be in there.
Yeah, yeah, that's my mistake.
So, yeah, so why don't we reread it, using the, the one on the front page?
Okay, with regard to case two thousand eighteen Z fifty-four, move to recommend grants and requests for variation to permit a parking space, a required front yard, a five-yard side yard parking space setback variation, a variation to modify a non-conforming accessory structure attached garage.
In accordance with the plan submitted.
In accordance with the plan submitted.
All right. Mr. Robkey, your motion? I, I assume Mr. Boyer's seconding that?
Yeah, still second.
Um, I can't support this for separate reasons. I can't support the front yard parking space, it's something I don't believe we wanna be institutionalizing. You know, comment was made, it's great to put the access in the back, because it's a safety issue, well, if it's a safety issue to pull into, park to get to the garage, it's also a safety issue to get in and park to that front yard parking space, that's there. Conceptually, I'm totally on board with the access to the, to the garage from the alley. From my perspective, for whatever it's worth, I wouldn't even mind if it had doors on the other side to allow you to put more cars if you needed to on that big pad, I just can't really comment on the garage variance or the request for those modifications, because it's in accordance with plans that...
We don't have, no.
We don't have. So, on, on the two different issues, that's where I stand, I'd, I'd like to support the garage aspect, I think it's a great idea, get that garage usable, understand the issue of the narrow driveway, and I think that would be a great improvement.
All right, Mr. Boyer?
So I, I see as a benefit that they're removing nine hundred plus or minus square feet of impervious surface, which helps out the neighborhood and the neighbor directly to the, to the north, right?
To the west.
To the west, right, to the west. I, I really see this turning on the, the, the current location, or the original location, siding of the garage, that's, that's about four inches too close to the lot line. Without the original siding built nineteen fourteen, or, you know, the early nineteen hundreds, they wouldn't need a request, a variance request to change the, the garage, or for the, for the alteration of the garage. So I have no problem with the, the alteration of the garage and the non-conforming structure. I really don't see that, that large of an issue retaining the pavement that's already existing, that has been there for, you know, for decades. That's, I think, the second request. And the third request, which is causing most issue, is the front yard parking. So I really think, living in that area is, is a benefit, living so close to the lake, but it's also a detriment, living so close to the lake and the beach, right? Other communities, like Lake Forest, is, is much stricter parking restrictions for non-resident patrons of the beach. There's only a couple of streets that you're allowed to park in, in Lake Forest, and it's, it would be the same as parking on Central, between like Eighth and, and the Village. They also have a town, a train parking lot, which is allowed for non-resident patrons of the beach. Well, Matt has made a decision that they can't restrict parking for a number of reasons, that's a position that they took for people going to the beach. And so, people living in this area, again, has the benefit of living close to the lake, but they don't have the open, it's not like living on Michigan Avenue, those people have the same parking issues and, and traffic, beach traffic is, is this neighborhood. But they have open space and, and some of the people live on the lake, so they have a benefit for living on Michigan Avenue, so there, there's a, there's, there's a trade off there. Here, they don't have the open space, they don't live on the lake, they do live close to the lake, they may not be lake fans, but, you know, it's, it's a big part of our community, that's why a lot of people like to live here, home values are such, because of, you know, the amenities we have, including the beach, but they also have these parking issues. They already have the driveway, well, that is a hardship, I truly believe that having a demand on their parking in front of their house, albeit a public street, but that's a, that's a unique demand, and I think that's a hardship. So if we're asking them to get rid of their existing parking, which is utilized there as tandem parking, as front yard parking, now, I, I, I just don't understand the logic of, of saying that you can't have this if you're gonna get rid of a thousand square feet of, of impervious service, you know, to, to help out the community and, and create more green space, and help out the neighbors with, with any drainage issues, but then also, well, yeah, and, and make them get rid of the, the front yard space. I, I think it meets the standards of review, I, you know, there's other, and then there's other, there's other houses in that area that have the same condition. Five twenty-five Forest, six oh one Forest, corner lot with a side drive, they park in their, their driveway. Six hundred Forest, corner lot with a side curb cut, they park in their driveway. Six ten Forest, interior lot with a side drive. Six oh seven Forest with a side drive, so I, I, I don't see this as out of character of the neighborhood as well, so I guess for it.
All right, Mr. Sermon?
Okay, I think they came here with very good intentions, and I can support the space in the front, if you were coming to ask for a new one and a new curb cut, I wouldn't, but I can support that. The driveway's been there, I think the only issue is unfortunately, the garage is four inches off of where it should be, or you could do whatever you wanted. And I understand, you know, it was there a need to, to have an architect involved and do all the drawings. To me, you've got a standard sized garage, you're not gonna, probably not very tall, maybe it's taller height-wise, but where the door would be, and I think it's reasonable just to say, you know, we're gonna put in a standard two-car garage door, and we'd approve this. I think, I think I have difficulty with the, the committee making it so difficult for you, when you're just trying to make a simple request and provide more green space, so I can support it.
All right, Mr. Schneider?
I can too, for all the things that have been said by Mr. Boyer, and it, it's four inches, we're talking about four inches, and that is almost an administrative decision. That shouldn't need to come back to us if they chose to put a door to the alley, so, I mean, this is not a material issue in my mind, and I can support it.
Mr. Cullen?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I agree with all the comments that have been made, you know, you have an, an older garage that they wanna maintain, they wanna, you know, just put, flip the door, I mean, if they have doors on both sides, doesn't matter to me. The, the driveway to the, to the garage is currently being used as a parking pad, you have the added benefit in this of, of freeing up nine hundred square feet of impervious surface, and they continue to use it as a parking pad. So, I, I mean, I think we get caught in some antics here, a parking pad that has existed for decades, because of the narrowness of the driveway, so I can support this, I think it meets the standards of review.
Well, I was, uh, looking at this a little bit differently, but I think, you know, after hearing the applicant, hearing the neighbors, and, and the rationale behind my fellow board members about the parking, I can, I, I, I see the, the value in it, not economic value, but the value, you know, to keeping it, because it's been used as parking. Where I'm kinda hung up on this is that, that we don't know what we're approving for the garage. And I know it's a technicality, that it's four inches, but it's still a non-conforming structure, and with a non-conforming structure, if they're gonna make modification to it, we're supposed to see what those modifications are in order to approve them, and we don't have that. So, for that, I can't support this. Now, I think with the comments going to the record like this, you know, it sounds like it's gonna be four to two, which would be a positive recommendation, but I still think that it would benefit everybody if you guys had some renderings of the garage, you know, moving forward, so that the village knows what you're planning on doing.
I guess I just wanna insert one thing.
Sure.
Renderings from an architect means presentation style with colors on everything else, really, you're looking just for a, a line drawing with some dimensions.
Right. I apologize.
So I wanna make sure that, you know...
I did stay at a Holiday Inn last night, but I'm not an architect, so... Um, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, and really what we're looking for is, what's the intent? You know, show us what you wanna do.
Showing the existing height, how tall it is, where the gutter line is, all this, you know.
And that could be drawn in? I mean, if they had a photo, you know, of their...
They really can't get a photo, 'cause the fence is right there, I don't think, right?
Well, I think you'd need, what, you, you need some drawings of what you plan to do.
But it can just be black and white, you can ask Lisa, she'll, can show you examples.
All right, why don't we take a vote on this?
Mr. Robkey?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair's gonna vote no on it. This is gonna go as a positive recommendation, Village Board, means on January eighth, it's gonna be in this room, seven o'clock, you've heard our comments on it. If one of you could come up and sign this letter for me, and you can take the other one with you, you don't have to sign the second one, and you have someone to pick the motion for the chairman to...
There you go, right here.
Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for zoning board of appeals for case number two zero one eight dash Z dash fifty-four.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, as well. Meeting's at seven thirty, the, the village board meeting's at seven thirty, not seven. And you guys don't have to stay for the whole meet, our whole meeting, yeah, you can leave when you're ready. I mean, we'd love to have the audience. Yeah, you wanna talk more, yeah.
You can always catch us on Channel Six, first and, first and third Wednesday.
Mr. Roberts, when you're ready.
Our next case is twenty eighteen Z fifty-one, twenty seven oh one Orchard Lane, this is a request for a one point one nine foot side yard pergola setback variation to permit the retention of an attached pergola.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you. Sylvia Nestor, two seven zero one Orchard Lane, apologies, I don't have notes, I'll try to be brief, conscious of your time, conscious that there are others here. I do wanna apologize for my wife, she wanted to be here, this is a, an important issue for her, but we got a little sick one at home, so... So just a little bit of background, and I'll try to be brief. We moved to Almetta a year ago, we bought this house, this is our first house, so we're learning a lot about the joys and hardships of ownership. We was, I believe it was a original owner in, in the house, so he had lived and raised a family there for thirty-five years, I believe we're gonna be here for probably as many years. So we, we kinda started with, you know, having a very small plan of what to do inside, and then it turned into a lot of work, and then we moved on the outside, and the deck that we actually built was the very last thing that we scrambled to go ahead and, and get some funds to, to put in, which we managed to primarily because we wanted to, we have two little girls, we wanted them to have a, a safe area where they could play in, in the back, and it's kind of a, a weird L-shaped backyard, so we're concerned about them going the streets, so we fenced it, we put a lot of work in, in, in the backyard as well, we got a lot of compliments from the neighbors, all the neighbors there, so... The reason, how did we get to actually having a pergola without actually having gone through the, the permit approval, we did get the permit approval for, for the, for the deck, when we moved in the house and we actually spent the summer there, we realized that that's, that spot, the way it's, it's set up, it's south facing, and the sun is just hitting the siding of the door and the deck, you couldn't even sit on the deck, it was literally burning a feet. So the girls, you know, we couldn't actually make use of what we were planning to, to do. So, you know, our contractor, who was actually a family friend, recommended that we build a, a pergola to get some shade, which we went ahead and did, we asked, you know, if, we have to go through our plans, they said, well, if you have the, the permits for the, the deck, you should be fine. Then we realized later on, when the, the inspector came, and they know this is a separate, separate issue. So, the hardship now, when, when, when I look through the, the plans, and I believe you have it in your plans there, is that in order for us to, to move the, the post of the pergola, th- those need to rest on the, on the footings, right, on the concrete footings. So we would have to literally rip the entire deck out to pour in new concrete footings to be able to move the, the post. The other thing would happen, if we were to move the, the posts, we wouldn't have access to the east, sorry, the, the west side of the property, it would, 'cause the post would be right in the, in the alley there, that we have. Does that make sense? So, i- if you look, if you look at the drawings there, it's, it's the corner of the house, so we, if, if we were to move the, 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 the post over...
Yep.
We, we wouldn't have access to, it would be like right in the middle of the stairs, they're now going to the alley, that's going out to the, the, the back, where the, the garbage is, yeah?
So you're saying the, the, what would that be, the southwest corner post of the pergola would move into the stairwell?
Yes, yes. Yeah. We did check with the neighbors, we explained the situation, it, it does not, I mean, they, does not, they don't feel like it would, it impacts them at all, at all. Again, we got a lot of positive comments about all the work that we've done on the property, on the exterior, they haven't seen the interior, but, you know, we're planning to live there for a long time, it's, it's a safety, we see it as a safety issue for the, for our kids. And, and in order for us to, to actually be conforming, we would have to literally rip everything up and start all over again.
So the post, which would be the southeast corner, the stairs are offset at a different location, so if you had to move that post, it would not block those stairs either? Or it would block those stairs?
Yeah, it would block the, the stairs.
So it blocks both sets of stairs? According to this drawing on one point six, you have stairs on the east and the west side of your deck.
Right, so I'm talking about the east side, sorry, not the west side, I'm talking about the east side primarily, those would be impacted, and that's where most of the, the heavy traffic is, that the, the recycling and the garbage is there, so, the alley to go to, that's where we have to place the recycling and garbage, on the, on the east side.
So the steps on the west side of the deck are set at a different location?
Yes, those are set on the north side, so those won't be affected.
All right, do we have any questions for our applicant? Yes.
On your exhibit one point seven, which is the side view, it shows the post is set in from the deck, and the deck is conforming?
Yes.
And the post is not conforming?
No, my, my understanding is, sir, is that the, it's, it's the, the height restriction, so the height of the, so it's actually, if, if you measure the, so it's, it's this, this part here, so if you measure from here, it's only a couple inches actually. So what we would do is, we would literally pop, sorry?
If you wanna put down on that, on that little table right there, then...
Oh, in this, in this thing here?
Yep.
Look at that, oh, there you go, okay, oh, that's cool. So, yeah, what, what we're talking about, I believe that it's, 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 it's this bit here, and so what we would do is, we would cut, we would cut these to, to meet that, whatever dimension is, minimum dimension is, but even, even if we cut this portion and would leave it flush with the post, it's still a couple inches too far, that's my understanding.
The main portion of it, the overall portion is still...
Right, right, the, the top, yeah, so the top, my understanding is that the top portion, you have less space.
So Lisa's gonna explain, real quick.
Yes, sir.
So we would, we were measuring the setback to the, to the face of the, the post, it is shown, instead, a little bit here, we were using the dimension that was shown on the decks, but it would be potentially a couple more inches into the property. We, we don't worry about the overhang, it's, so it's to the outside of that, that vertical structure, because it's attached to the house, it's treated as a, like a porch, which a porch has a, is allowed to encroach less than a deck, a low deck like this, so that's why the requirement, the deck was okay, but the pergola is not.
Okay, so the...
So the post is too close?
Correct.
Again, by how much?
Even though it's on, within the deck space?
Correct.
It's actually inside the deck, a little bit, sorry.
The deck is allowed to get closer to the property line than a vertical structure is allowed to get... The deck is allowed to get closer to the property line than a vertical structure is allowed to get in.
So.
Which, which, sorry, just to add, but the contractor only worked in Chicago and he said that it's a different zone in Chicago.
It was a closed porch, it would make sense.
It's still a vertical, yeah, I mean, it's still, I, I get it, I get it, I get it. Some people argue a pergola is not, uh, yeah.
We treat it like a porch, right? So it has a, um, a, a two-foot encroachment, rather, unlike a.
Oh, if it wasn't attached to a building and it had posts on the other side, this would not be an issue?
If it wasn't attached to the building, it wouldn't really help. It would have to meet the, um, the minimum side yard setback. So it would be further, need to be further in.
Okay. Thank you.
So how much is it? I'm trying to read through this, the amount that the post is.
We didn't have, we didn't, um, have taken into account the setback of the post from the edge of the deck. We were just using the deck dimension. Um, so maybe, maybe the applicant knows what the, what the difference is, we could certainly add that to.
I don't think it's that much, but, uh, you know, what, it's important again to understand is that this post rests on a concrete footing, which we had to, to obviously pour in when we built the, the, the deck. So we, I mean, I asked the, the contractor, and I said, there's no way for, for them to move this, because it wouldn't have the necessary concrete.
Wouldn't have the proper bearing.
Yeah, so then, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't put it there, we'd have kids there all day. So, uh, we would have to literally rip everything out and pour new.
What, when was this drawing prepared?
Excuse me? Uh, I apologize, I, I don't, I don't know. Not, not too long ago, I think it was, uh.
Was this prepared before you built the pergola?
Yes, I believe, yes, when the, when the inspector came to do the final inspection on the house, he noticed the pergola and, and looked at the existing permits, noticed that we didn't have the permit for the pergola, which I wasn't aware. And then I went ahead and, and built that and applied with the village, uh, filled the proper application.
Is the pergola post in the cement?
Yes, it's, it's, it's sitting on the cement.
On?
It's, it's, it's resting.
Down in the cement?
No, it's, uh, no, because the cement had, had already been poured, but it needs to sit on it as, to support it.
Typically, what they'd have, John, is a, around, maybe twelve inch diameter is easy to pour. And then they put the post on top, and they'd have these angles, ninety-degree angles, that they bolt into the concrete down and then horizontally into the wood, so.
The concrete it's sitting on was poured for the porch?
Yes, exactly. And at the time when we, again, I want to re-stay that when we built the porch, we, we barely scrambled to just build a porch, because we wanted, and we had no intention to build something else on top of it.
Just the deck?
Yes, just the deck. If we had known that we needed a different set of footing to allow for a pergola, we would have done it, but we were not aware at the time.
So the, the deck would not have been approved?
No, the deck is completely conforming. We already got approval on the deck. Everything has been approved, everything was to code, we did so many changes, it's, yeah, yeah.
I just want to wrap my head around something, clarify. So the measurements that we have is the measurement of the outside edge of the deck?
Yes.
Not the outside edge of the post?
Correct.
So the outside edge of the post is farther in than the outside edge of the deck?
Correct.
And we don't know what that measurement is?
Well, you could.
It's just going to be a two by four on the face of it, I'm sure.
You could assume that it would be something around a ten or a twelve inch.
No.
Diameter post.
Right.
So then that's the center. And if they covered, can you see the foundation from the outside?
No.
There's wood in front.
No, so it, and it actually overhangs, it actually, it, it overhangs. So it's actually, I would say it's about this far from the edge of the deck, which is the, 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 the south side of the post.
You're saying there's probably two by ten faceboards around?
Yeah.
The, the, the apron for the deck?
Yeah.
All right, so it's.
Plus then the concrete is either ten or twelve, and then it's centered on that.
Well, you're saying it's cantilever beyond?
Yeah, it is, it is cantilever beyond.
The deck is, I'm just saying that.
So then, actually, there's deck boards on the other side of the post? Or is that, is that the edge of the deck with a?
No, it's not. So you have the, the concrete footing where the, so, so in order for the, the con- contractor to, to, uh, put the post in, he cut into the, the deck, he cut into the deck. So that, that, the board that he cut into, that board continues out and then overhangs about this far out.
Okay, and then.
And so the footing was put in after the deck?
Now, the footing must have been put in, and then there was a support probably centered on that.
Right.
Yeah. But then he must, did he, if, if this is the foundation, does this, then the post get connected this way to?
If you look at one point five, if you can put one point five on the, it shows a view. You see the posts?
Yep.
I assume the po- and then there is this construction, which looks like two by sixes or something spaced.
We still don't have a measurement truly on that.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, I apologize, we don't, we don't have the measurement. But there is, there is from the post to the edge of the deck, which is, uh, which is legal conforming, there is, there is space. There was, so it's not right on the edge of the, of the.
So on top of the footing, you had to have some support that was there for the deck. Then they came back and they attached some way right up against.
Yes.
The support for the deck. They could either put it on this side of the support or this side, but that's what he had to connect to.
Yes. I, I believe that's what it, I mean, I don't see what is, what's happening underneath.
All right, let me just try to wrap this up. So we measured from the deck, not the post. And the post is farther in from the deck. We don't know what that measurement is, but through trying to, you know, do some gymnastic, gymnastics here, it might be over two inches farther in from the edge of the deck, which is where we measured from, and that's where they need the one point nine inch.
Foot.
One, I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry, one point, one point one nine foot, so a couple, two, three inches, so it's.
It's still a, it's still a foot.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Beyond where it should be.
I mean, they could have connected the whole pergola to one of the joists down below. I guess he didn't feel comfortable with that.
I'm sorry.
I don't know where, I don't know where to go.
Any other questions for our applicant? No? All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in for or against this case? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the case. I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board that wants to make a motion here. All right, Mr. Boyer, thank you.
All right, for purposes of discussion, I recommend granting, um, I'm sorry, uh, in regards to case number twenty eighteen Z fifty-one, uh, for purpose of discussion, I recommend, um, granting a request for a one point one nine foot side yard pergola setback variation to permit the retention of attached pergola, accordance with the plans.
Do I have a second?
Of course, plants made right.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robkey. Mr. Boyer?
All right, so, uh, interesting, um, I'm torn, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say on this. Um, you know what I'm going to say, that generally zoning, or, you know, our, our board doesn't grant variance requests for, uh, work that was done without a permit.
Well, actually, you know, let's keep in mind that it's.
Generally.
The, the, the direction that we've been given by council is, whenever there's work that was done without permit, and they come and ask, uh, for the variation after the work is done, you got to look at this as if the work hadn't been done. Would you approve it, or would you not approve it?
Right. So, th- this house is interesting, the way it's oriented. It is a corner side lot, and the front door faces Orchard, and it doesn't face Locust. So they, they do have a play area in what would normally be the backyard, but it doesn't really operate as a backyard as the way the house is designed with, with egress and, egress and, ingress and egress, right? Middle age moment. So this really feels as though this is, this is operating as a backyard. This is where they come in and out of the house. Probably where the kitchen is, is probably off their kitchen, right? So it's, it's interesting that they need a side yard setback variation for a, a structure that would typically be in somebody's backyard, but for the way the house is oriented, so.
Love to hear what anybody else has to say on this. All right, Mr. Robkey.
Well, first I'd ask a question.
What would the requirement be for the rear yard, if it was a setback?
Uh, it could encroach, um, four or six feet into a rear yard.
As opposed to?
As opposed to two feet in the side.
So it would require more of a setback, or am I not?
Uh, um.
Right now, we have this.
It, it can encroach two feet now. It would, it would be able to encroach, um, four or six feet, so.
But how far would it have to be from the property line?
Well, the, the rear yard is the, the west side of the lot, so it would.
But if it was a rear yard, going to Mr. Boyer's point?
Well, not, not necessarily, the rear yard is how the house operates. And, and that's, that's really the point.
Uh, I think, going to the chairman's reminder, that, uh, direction has been to, uh, consider a request where something's been built as if it hadn't been built. It would seem to me as though it would be very easy, had this not been built, to modify the design, to make it conforming and to accomplish the same pergola. I'm still troubled by this whole case, but it would seem that in keeping with direction from counsel, that, yeah, again, if this was new, we would all be saying, gee, you can accomplish the same thing, move the post back, you've already got a little bit of a cantilever at the deck. If you have an extra foot of cantilever, it's not going to change anything structurally, and it could have accomplished everything and been conforming.
Mr. Cullin, any comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, it, I mean, it would appear to me, you know, and I'm not an architect, so I'll, I'll wait for Mr. Sermon to.
You could, you could pretend. You've done it before. Usually you put on a hat, though.
Yeah, but I get paid when I pretend, no, um.
You get paid to play an architect.
It would just seem to me that you, you could move the posts without ripping up the whole deck to fix the problem.
Yes.
And because we're supposed to look at it as if it hadn't been built, we'll re-approve it this way. I don't think we'd approve it this way, so I guess I can't support it.
I guess, Mr. Snyder.
Can I ask another question? You were, just to clarify, we're measuring from the edge of the post, is that correct?
Any, absent any other information, that is the most conservative number we have.
Not from the edge of the deck?
No, no, right, yes. We, the, the dimension that is given in the report is to the edge of the deck.
So if you, if I look at one point five.
This is a seven and a half.
The posts are three and a half inches by.
This is seven and a half.
By five and a half. And then if you look at that plan.
Right.
To the south of the posts.
Yes.
It looks like to be a two by something, right?
Oh.
Which is one and a half inches. And a space that looks like to be about four inches. Which is three and a half inches, let's say four inches. And another.
That's an alignment.
Another two by something, which is one and a half inches. So you have one and a half plus one and a half, which is three, plus, looks like a four inch space, which is seven inches. That, where the deck goes beyond the edge of the post, right? And so what we're really talking about is a, instead of one point one nine inch.
One point one nine foot.
Foot, side yard pergola, we can reduce that by eight inches, no?
Uh, if we're comfortable. If we're comfortable with that, that being the offset, uh, from the edge of the deck, sure.
Really then reduced, uh, seven inches versus one foot point one nine, which is maybe, so we're talking about maybe five or six inches, the other day.
Roughly?
Roughly.
I think we're getting an awful lot of speculation in there.
What do you mean, speculation?
I mean, speculation, it's, it's, you're, you're making assumptions based upon a drawing that isn't dimensioned, and we're just not sure. I mean, I don't know why anybody would build it the way that it's, it's shown. You would double up a member there, you wouldn't have a space in between it. You'd have two two by tens at the end of that deck spanning that, you wouldn't put a four inch space in between it. You're, you're not getting the benefit of doubling up.
But I think, if I can point something out, I think that what you're looking at here is, uh, the, the bottom most.
That's a pergola plan.
The bottom most, uh, uh, two by ten or whatever it is, that's twelve feet long, that's the existing deck. The next one up on the page is the header for the pergola. So it's not doubling up the deck. So this line here is the deck. This line here is the header on the pergola.
I mean, this.
Is up here, right? This line is this.
Okay.
If you go to one point eight, it actually shows the, the concrete footing for the post extending beyond. I mean, I, I don't think we can start fudging these dimensions.
Yeah.
Based upon what we have here.
May I go ahead?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Snyder was.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just moving this way, but if, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You know, thinking about it, I mean, unfortunately, um, he relied on the contractor, but the contractor knows better than that. If he works in Chicago, works in a suburb, I've worked with all different size contractors, and they know there's a difference. And I think if we're supposed to look at this as if it was just coming to us, I'd say there were other options for the structure. You could have, you know, uh, between the two posts, you could have had, you know, joists, which are probably already there on each side, and you could support off that. You know, we're talking about a, a structure that's open, so.
Sorry, you're saying that, that the post doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to rest with the concrete?
Uh, I don't know, I think it might be a little, there might have been a different way to do it.
If it had been done differently, you could have doubled up the joist and put it on the joist, but.
Yeah.
At this point, I think you'd go to concrete.
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder, you want to add anything, or are you okay now? All right, my, my comments on this really are, uh, along lines of, uh, Mr. Robkey's. I think that if this would have come before us, I think that, um, there are some solutions that would have probably been asked to, uh, been made by staff before he even had to bring it to us, so that we wouldn't have had to see it, so. I, I think there's, there's got to be some other way to have done this. I think it was just the most convenient way for whomever, whether it was the contractor or our applicant, that, hey, let's just do this and, and get it done, whether you knew or not that you needed the permit for it. So I, I think if it would have come bef- I, I honestly, I don't think it would have come before us, because I think staff would have corrected it before it got to us. That being said, um, I'm not going to be able to support this, because like I say, if this, if you were coming to us with this request, we'd say, no. Figure out how to do it without the request, because it's, you, it's, it's not a big difference. You know, it's inches, is what it sounds like, it's, it's less than a foot. Not his calculation, but. All right, why don't we take a vote on this?
Mr. Boyer?
Uh, no.
Mr. Robkey?
No.
Mr. Cullin?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes no as well. So that's going to go as a negative recommendation to the board. The meeting's on the sixth. Now, um, you're going to be asked to basically re-present this case on the sixth to the board, and they can overturn our vote with a fi- overturn our recommendation with a five-two vote. All right, in favor of overturning it? All right, yeah, so Lisa can help you out with a different date then. But, but the point that I'm trying to make is, come and present to the village board, because they will, they could have a different perspective on this than us. Again, we have to look at the code and apply it in a stricter manner than the village board does.
Okay, and then if they deny it, what's the next step?
Uh, shoo.
They may send it.
They may, yeah, I don't. I guess, I think what you might want to do is, when you come to the board, get some better measurements of really what is the request that you're making? You know, because like Lisa pointed out, basically, it's been measured to the front of the porch, right?
The deck.
I'm sorry, the deck. And yet, what needs to be measured is to the front of the post. And then you'll know what your request is, all right? And it's going to be inches. Your request is going to be somewhere, you know, like 10 to 12 inches is what it feels like it's going to be, 10 to 11, yeah.
I do have a question for Lisa. If the deck was approved, and if the trellis up above aligned with that, say you cut those ends off, does that meet it then, or is it a different dimension than the outside of the deck?
We generally go to the post, the face of the post.
Okay.
For a pergola, it's the face of the post.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's like a porch, right?
Right.
In a porch, you can have an overhang.
Like an eave.
Like an eave, yeah, yeah, so.
I guess, yeah, so he needs to measure.
To the face of the post.
From the post, how far out those trellis pieces.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So for me to understand correctly is.
No, Bob, that has no impact.
To be compliant, just the post has to move, the top of the pergola can remain the same? Is that what we're saying?
Technically, yes. That's how we've looked at those kinds of structures.
Put in new posts, take out the old ones.
Well, you know, but still, what.
I'm not understanding the.
The vertical structure.
There's only three posts.
Okay, the vertical structures are how the setback is being defined. Okay? We don't know exactly what that is, because what is being presented to us is really the face of the deck.
Okay.
All right? So if you can get a measurement, the difference of the face of the post to the face of the deck, make the calculation in here, so that everybody understands really what the difference is. And it, like I said, right now, at the face of the deck, it's 1.19 feet. All right, .19 feet is.
1.19.
No, okay, no. .19 feet is two tenths of a foot, which is what? It's less than an inch, right?
No.
Two inches.
Two inches? All right, I went the wrong way. All right, so if your setback, if your post is setback like four inches from the face of the deck, right, then you're less than a foot off of what, and so it's kind of a minimal request, and you can make that argument to them. The other thing, as Mr. Boyer pointed out, that you might want to bring up to the village board, I'm telling you your whole argument here, is that the way that your house is oriented on your lot is a hardship for you, all right? And the hardship is that the way that the village defines a front yard and a side yard, right, is that the lot dimension that is shortest is the front yard, although your face orients on the long side. So you can argue, or you can bring that up as part of the penalty that you have against you, all right? And so it would be different if that was a backyard setback as opposed to a side yard setback, all right?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I need you to sign one of these for me. And this will be replayed, so if you want to hear my comments again. I think it's replayed like two or three times during the week.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-C-51.
Oh, second. Thank you, Mr. Boyer, second. All in favor?
Aye.
As well.
That's for you, just so you have it, and then we'll check. Thank you.
No.
Our next case is 2018-C-56, 412 Sunset Drive. This is a request for a 433.77 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a new front walk on the legal non-conforming structure.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe.
Eliminated.
Yeah. All right, who's going to move? All right, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Luke Stuckmeyer, 412 Sunset.
Catherine Stuckmeyer, 412 Sunset.
We'll try not to take too much time. We have a home that we purchased about 18 months ago, moved in in January, and we've done a lot of rehab and trying to get things fixed up, outside, inside. The last piece is this front walk. We think we have a unique property in that our hardship would be, we have a, if you look at the picture, we have a pie-shaped property on a cul-de-sac facing north, so our front yard is much smaller than a normal front yard, but then it fans out into the back. The current sidewalk that is there, which we're trying to adjust just a little bit, it's my understanding that we could pour concrete or pavers or whatever, and just recreate the current sidewalk and stoop that's there. The reason we don't want to, we want to adjust it just a little bit is, it's currently a winding, like S-shaped sidewalk, which goes up to a stoop that doesn't really fit the front door. So when you take, come up the sidewalk, it takes you up to the right side of the doors, and if you were coming out of the house, elderly parents, whoever, with walkers, you actually have to turn directly to your side and then find the sidewalk, otherwise you'd be walking off into our garden. Actually, it's really just landscaping, but.
It's going to be a garden.
Someday it'll be a garden. See, kind of, it's an awkward way to come off the stoop, which is not very large, so we're looking to try and extend that. And having heard the numbers today, I don't know exactly what they are compared to everybody else for previous cases, but it's like a foot or 12 inches, we're trying to make the stoop deeper, and then we're trying to make it maybe the length of this podium longer, so that it fits the front door and that the sidewalk comes up to the middle of the stoop as opposed to just the far right corner of the stoop. And then the rest of it is simply taking out the curving structure of it and making it square, because architecturally, it looks better with the squared, as opposed to the old winding sidewalk. The reason we're doing the sidewalk is it's the last thing that's in bad shape. We had a trick-or-treater fall and skinner knee type thing. And it's bad. It's got an oak tree, not an oak tree, a maple tree that's in the way, so our impervious status would be different if the tree weren't there, but it's probably a 65-year-old maple tree that's the only tree in the front yard, so we don't want to take it down. So we have to go around the tree with the sidewalk in a square fashion to the front door. The last part of the hardship would be that our driveway already puts us at an impervious level that normally would have been over code, but it was fine back in the day, apparently, and it goes down under the house, so if you had a sidewalk going from the driveway to the front door, you'd be okay, but our driveway slants steeply down under the house, and to access it from there for almost anybody, especially in the winter season, is really, really difficult. So we're trying to make those adjustments to the front sidewalk. If you have any questions, I hope I can answer them.
So I think, I just, I'm going to jump on just a couple of things for you here. If you look, if everybody's, you know, referencing 1-4 or 1-5, the shaded areas, the front yard setback, so you can see the driveway's entirely in the setback, almost the majority of the walk is in the setback. So my question to Lisa, because I couldn't figure it out from what we had, what was the net increase in impervious surface? And there is a net increase, and it is 56 square feet roughly, okay? So it's not a huge increase, and they're being penalized because of the driveway, as he pointed out. So to have a walk off the driveway, it's in the front yard setback, et cetera, et cetera. All right, any questions?
I have a quick question for Lisa. Lisa, if this was, say, a normal 50-foot lot, the amount that they have in the way of coverage, would that, you know, I think the hardship is.
It is 50 feet. That's a lot.
Pardon me?
It is 50 feet.
Oh, it is.
You mean if it was a rectangular lot?
Well, if it was just more, yeah, if the shape was different. I mean, I agree with a lot of stuff they've said, that you can't have the walk. But I don't think they're looking for an excessive amount.
Because of the driveway going down.
Yep.
And because of the cul-de-sac, and I live on a cul-de-sac, and I.
We don't have a sidewalk or parking either, so that's why they, I think they put the driveway in, because you can't park in the cul-de-sac.
Is there, I'm trying to figure out the exact number for the square foot contribution of the house to the.
Because that corner is sitting in the front yard.
On 1-4, it says it's 27.1 feet, house first. That's what I'm reading, I guess. And then on the second page, it's 21.
Where do you see this?
Would that number be what you want it to be? Well, it, well, it's fine, but is that, is that number to 27.1, and I'm on 1.4 right now, is that the square foot contribution the house is making, the 27 feet? Is that right?
I don't see the, oh, I see the 27.1.
My understanding from talking to the contractor is that the proposed site plan was more accurate, so it's more like 21.
The house is contributing 21 square feet to this request.
Right.
Okay, so. Okay. Any other questions?
I think we should play a round of the beer money game, but.
We are doing a taping tomorrow in Forest Park.
I don't get it.
I host a trivia show that he must watch.
Someone watches, thank you.
Thank you for watching, I appreciate that.
It's like, you know, every now and then I get recognized for being. All right, any other questions for our.
Never knew that John was so into trivia.
All right.
I would win 130 bucks off.
All right, all right, focus, focus. We still have another case. All right, anybody else, any other questions? No, no, no. All right, anybody in the audience want to speak for or against the case? No? Okay, I'm going to close the case, I'm going to ask this, there's a member of the board one. Mr. Sermon, you guys can have a seat.
Thank you.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 433.77 square foot or 32.71% front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a new front walk on a legal non-conforming structure at 412 Sunset Drive in accordance with the plans submitted.
All right, Mr. Snyder, second. Mr. Sermon, your motion.
After, you know, at first, I wasn't sure when I read through it, but after going to the site, I understand the hardships better with the tree there and the issue with the stoop, and, you know, it's a strange condition that they created at first to have it that way on an angle. I mean, it's, so it was not a good design, and we've come across some of those when it's probably the architect, but John would know better. Coming up with these swooping walks that just don't work that well. So I think the hardship is the shape, again, that the garage goes down to the garage, you know, to the structure below, and you can't have just a short little walk, so I think there are several hardships that contribute to this, and I can support it.
I can too, for similar reasons. The tree determines in some respect the shape of the walk, and the stoop has to be corrected to make it more usable, and of course, the big difference in terms of the front yard is the drive into the garage, which is below grade, so I can support this variation.
Any comments? Mr. Boyer, no? Any comments over here?
I agree.
You agree?
All right, yeah, I think, as pointed out, that the shape of the lot is the initial hardship here, and then things get compounded with the siding of the house contributing to some of the additional front yard impervious surface calculation, the driveway, the sidewalk having to work around a tree. So I think, you know, all in all, this is going to meet the standards of review, and going to support it. Why don't we take a quick vote?
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cullin.
Yes.
Mr. Robkey.
Yes.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board. Meeting's on January 6th, or January 8th, 7:30 in this room. It'll be a quick meeting for you guys, because you'll be on the consent agenda. Could one of you come up and sign this letter for me, and you can take the other one with you? And thank you for coming in, waiting tonight, and enjoying our entertainment.
Thank you.
Authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-56.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Cullin, all in favor?
Aye.
Like, who said that? What's his name? All right. Unamas.
Our next case is 2018-C-47, 1140 Michigan Avenue. This is a request for a 4.81 foot side yard generator setback variation to permit the installation of an emergency standby generator.
Welcome back, Mr. Cook. We've seen you numerous times. I do want to make a comment, if, I assume you're the homeowner. If he wants to make any comments, I'm going to have to swear him in.
Just in case?
Yeah, let's do it. Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that you'll tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do. Thank you. Just in case. All right, Mr. Cook, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So my name's Chuck Cook, from Cook Architectural Design Studio. We're located at 150 North Wacker in Chicago, and I'm a resident, a 25-year resident of Wilmette at 1518 Central Avenue. So we are the architects for this project at 1140 Michigan Avenue on behalf of the owner, Mark Levine. And we're here today regarding this generator on the north side of the property. I know it's all spelled out in your packet, but I'll give you just a brief overview on it. The, what we're looking to do is place a generator sitting, I guess I would say perpendicular to the north property line, and in doing so, the end of the generator will be encroaching into the 15-foot setback requirement for a generator. The house setback on that side is 10 feet, and the generator essentially will align with the edge of the house, but because generators are more restrictive than the rest of the house, is the reason that we're here for the variance. The hardship side of this is a couple-fold. One is that it is a slope property, it's a lakefront property, so it's, those are the few, you know, non-flat properties in Wilmette. And because it is a slope property, that lower level, to be a walkout level, is about 14 feet below the main first floor level. We have bathrooms, mechanical equipment, pumps, lots of things down there, so it's, nothing can rely on gravity to get back to the, to the street utilities, and so in case of a power outage, the need for a generator becomes critical to make all of the elements of this house function. The slope property also minimizes or reduces the opportunities to place a generator along the side of the house, because the slope is just more restrictive. Obviously, we need level ground to put the generator on. And because it is a lakefront property, I mean, effectively, you have two front yards. I mean, there are more people that seem to view the house from the lakeside than they do from the street side. So we, from a practical point of view, don't want a generator sitting out by the lake. So we want to always have it in the side, and we purposely set it up, we created this kind of side court or niche into the north side of the house, so that these mechanical elements, condensers and generators, could be located there so that they're screened from the street by the garage structure and are really not visible to the public. The reason that it's, or part of the reason that it's encroaching, it's kind of a compound issue, but primarily, it's because the requirements for the generator have changed since the house was, the house was designed four years ago, and it's just a process of getting, completing drawings, getting it approved, and getting it constructed. You know, we're four years into it, and the requirement for the generator, when it was originally designed, required a one-foot clearance on two sides of the generator, and now that's a three-foot clearance.
Is it manufactured, or?
It's a, it's a long conversation, but essentially, it's partly manufacturer-driven, but it's more by the installers-driven. The manufacturer specs still allow for a one-foot setback, but no one will install it that way and warranty it. So it becomes a warranty issue, so we can't get anyone to install it without a three-foot setback, and that's the biggest part of it. It's compounded by some other elements that come into play from the geometry's point of view, but that's why we're here. The couple of things I'd like to point out are, you know, beyond that general description, is, you know, I think there are two primary concerns with a generator. Are we going to see, for the, for the community, you know, are we going to see it, and are we going to hear it? And in this case, you will not see it from the street. It's still, the body of it is still tucked into that nook that we've created. Furthermore, from a landscape point of view, it will be landscaped and fenced in, so you physically, whether, no matter where it sits within that fenced-in area, you wouldn't see it anyway as a, from the street or as a neighbor. And I guess furthermore to that point, the property to the north, which is really the only, only person that potentially would be impacted by this. only, only person that potentially would be impacted by this, their driveway is on that side of their property, and their driveway ramps down because their garage is below. So when you're on, on their property adjacent to where this generator is, you're actually standing 11 feet below the, where the generator would be, plus there would be a fence. They have a retaining wall that goes up and actually projects even higher than that. So they're, they're very well, I guess I would say, screened from it. You can't stand there and see, see where this generator would be. Their house sits 25 feet away from where the generator is, is intended to be located. And again, we're going to have a fence and landscaping around it, so they won't see it. The, and then from a sound point of view, at the property line, it'll be 68 decibels, which is below the, the requirements of the, the village. And at their house, it'll be just above 60 decibels, so it's well below the required. We're not able to calculate the reality of what it'll be even on their property because the factor of standing down this ramp 11 feet below is, is going to help even more, but we don't have that calculation. So I think from those two primary issues of, of the visual aspect of it and the, and the sound requirement for it are, become non-issues with, with the granting of this variance.
So my question is, in the, in the application or the packet here, it says that you're having, the reason that you're having to request this now is because you've rotated the generator, which now causes part of it to exceed or step, go into the setback area, correct?
Correct.
And that's because you're saying that now the installer says, no, we got to do it this way because we need additional, all right?
Correct.
We need additional space. Last year, we had a case, 1132 Michigan Avenue, the exact same thing. You weren't involved in that one, were you?
Yes.
All right, so is this the same generator?
No.
Different company, different generator, different?
Yeah.
All right. So my note was, okay, this is a new house, how did you not anticipate this? But it's, you're saying it's the installer warranting?
Exactly, yeah.
All right. Question, go ahead.
Okay. If you said, I, I have a real difficult time with it, I really do. After you were here once before the generator issue, I'm an architect, I could never go and tell a client, you know, I built very complex 50, $75 million projects, and I had to know upfront what the criteria was for every single piece of equipment. And the difficult, it made it worse when I heard that you, it took four years to build this, that you had the opportunity to review it and find out all that criteria. But I guess that, my impression of it is it didn't, that didn't take part. And even with the way it's located now, it wouldn't have been in compliance at one foot away. It's three feet, you've added two feet, but it still wouldn't have been in compliance.
It's because it's rotated before you had it.
Yeah, okay.
Right, it was intended to run.
I just have a real hard time with it. If we're supposed to look at these as if we're looking at them for the first time, you know, now is not, you know, I don't know why at the 11th hour, when the project's almost done, well, that this is happening. It's not the process for architecture, engineering, and construction. It does not work that way. If I did that, it would be called errors and omissions, and I'd be paying for it. So I don't mean to be hard, but after you've done it one time and then you come back again, it really is tough to, to, to deal with.
I think without going into the specific causes, I think the issue is what caused the hardship, and it's not caused by the site, it's not caused by some other unique characteristics. A couple of quick questions, though, just relating, just to understand the whole issue. Where are the, the sound calculations coming from?
Where are they coming from? From the information on the manufacturer's site, so they give you a formula for every linear foot coming in.
Right, which basically assumes it's in the open. So it wasn't, nobody, no acoustical engineer looked at this to say, well, gee, these buildings could be amplifying it or...
Correct.
Changing, so. Have you considered, I don't normally propose alternative solutions, but recognizing sort of the bind you're in, have you considered building a platform and stacking your AC units there so that you could put it back to your original orientation?
No, we haven't considered that.
I'm not sure if those are top discharge or side, but it seems like you'd have ample room around the sides. Just curious.
Yeah, they are top discharge, but...
Any other questions for our applicant?
Could you give us an example, I mean, of what 68 decibels sounds like? Is it the speech between you and I right now?
I don't know what a, to be able to give you an exact of what they would be. It's less than a lot of other...
I think Lisa has an app, right? Good, she does.
I checked it also. I think it, normal speech ranges between 60 and 70, I think. Is that correct?
My app is saying that our conversation now is like in 70.
Yeah, okay.
60, 60 to 70.
And I guess the other thing is, it's only on during an emergency.
Exactly.
Or testing.
It does cycle.
It does cycle tests.
How often does it test?
It's going to be tested periodically.
Every week or...
You can control what that is. I mean, the manufacturer tells you to do it once a week, but people that do it less. One last thing, just as an aside, the owners have communicated with the neighbor to the north, which would be the, the one that would be affected by this, and they have, they have no objections to this being granted or approved.
All right. Are there any other questions for our applicant? No. All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against us? Yeah, you support it. All right, I'm going to close the case, I'm going to ask if there's someone that'd like to make a motion here. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Case number 2018-Z-47, move to recommend granting a request for a 4.81-foot side yard generator setback variation to permit the installation of an emergency standby generator at 1140 Michigan Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Move second. Thank you, Mr. Robke.
I think I have kind of a sense as to what happened here with the change in the requirements by the installer for setbacks and the orientation. My critical issue is the decibel level at the property line. And if that is within, and I understand it is the manufacturer's schedule or, or statistic, but we have to go with that, that's all we have. I don't know how we can, how we can override that. So I think the key to me is what is the sound level at the property line, and this is well within the requirements, the maximum requirements of the village, so I can support it.
Mr. Robke?
I think with regard to the sound absent calculations from an acoustical engineer, I don't put any stock in a representative number because we don't know what the environment might be doing, where it's placed, what the environment might be doing to those sound levels. And they're not asking for a variation, but I think it would have been helpful perhaps to, to see that calculated. I, I guess I just, at, at the end of the day, I don't see a, there's, there's talk of a changed requirement, whether it changed or not, I'm just not seeing that as a hardship that rises to the level of something that should be the basis for granting a variance. I don't, I don't know what changed or how it changed or if it was misunderstood. You know, frequently, we assume three feet around. All mechanical equipment may have been a cut sheet that showed otherwise, there might be other equipment, could have been equipment change. But normally, when we talk about a hardship, it's a hardship based upon site conditions, national, natural conditions, not something based upon something that may or may not have happened during the design process. And based upon that, I, I hope you can find a solution within that space, but I can't support the, without understanding a hardship.
Mr. Cullen?
Yeah, when the last one was up here, I did vote against it, but there were a number of neighbors who were significantly opposed to it. And, you know, if you've talked to the neighbor next door and they are okay with it, I agree, I think they are the only potentially impacted party. And if they're okay, then, and this was done, you know, for warranty reasons and what have you, I, I can support it.
Mr. Sherman?
I guess I, you know, after, you know, it's a new construction, and I, I don't, I guess I just don't see a reason that it, that we can support it as a hardship with new construction.
Okay, Mr. Boyer?
Well, just for discussion purposes, so I just completely understand, it's new construction, and there's, there's things that we look at, how new construction should apply, or how we apply the code in new construction. And we have a blank slate, the, the house should comply. But, so in this type of construction, that's just a question. So it is a larger house, you know, there's, there's other homes that have, that are, been built on Michigan Avenue. I'm not, not an architect, nor do I play one.
You want to be one, though?
No, I'm good, we got two here, that's plenty. One and a half.
Who's the...
That's John.
Yeah.
All right. But, oh, right, I'm sorry, two and a half, sorry.
I'm still registered in Texas.
So these, it is a fairly difficult construction on this, this slope, right? And so it, it takes a lot longer to build. And I'm just looking at the homes that are being built on Michigan Avenue when we drive by, it seems like they're, it's, they're being built in perpetuity, right? And so I can see that, for whatever reason, you know, maybe it's a difficulty construction, you know, how deep they have to dig to put the foundations in, that things could change along the way, right? And so I don't think it's a typical interior lot construction, a tear-down or rebuild, which pretty much gets put up in six to eight months, right? So I can see that the, there is a length of a construction on, on these types of homes that something like this could come up to create a hardship, maybe?
So, you know, I was looking at this because it's the exact same request as last year in the other home. I think in, you know, looking at the differences, that, that other one, I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, with the nod of the head, that was more in like a, an enclosed, like almost pit with like a grate over it and everything, so...
And acoustical treatment.
And acoust, yeah, so I was, yeah, so if I recall, I think I supported it because it was justified, but at least as I look back, I, I think it's right. This one is a little bit more open, but it's still kind, it's, it still seems to be a little bit enclosed. It's screened, and the difference to the neighboring lot is, is significant in my mind in the elevation and the distance to the house of the neighbor to the north that's being affected by this.
That little bit of enclosure could amplify the sound as well, depending how it's, it's treated. One thing that always troubles me, a comment was, was made, and, and, you know, I don't mean to suggest anything inappropriate, you know, we haven't heard from the neighbor, number one, that they support it, but to me, anyway, that would be, that would be irrelevant because a future property owner could come along and be surprised by that, or not build a new home, and, and not be supportive of that. And I think our, our obligation is not just to protect the current homeowners, but future homeowners as well. Just throw that in.
But where I got, you know, just where I got comfortable with this was, as I was kind of running down the road, you know, the elevation changed, the distance to that house, but then also that, you know, what do we have to go by, except the manufacturer's specs and their calculations as decibel levels at certain distances? And according to what's been presented to us, it's below our requirements at the lot line by two decibels. But, you know, we're talking and we're at 70 to 75 decibels.
It seems to me, if I make a, distance is arbitrary, whether it's 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet. That's not the point in this case. It has to be the level of sound at the property line that disturbs the property owners.
I don't think that distances in our zoning code are arbitrary or intended to be treated as though they're arbitrary.
So I was looking at this at first, you know, my comment is, this is a new house, how do you not anticipate this? You explain why, and it's a valid excuse, and it seemed to run, I can't remember exactly why the old one had to turn, but it seemed similar. And so I, I guess in my mind, even though this is new construction, I, I was able to justify it, you know, because of the distance to the neighbor's house, and because at the lot line, according to what we're presented with here, it's, it says that that distance is 68 decibels and 70 is our requirement at the lot line, so they're under it. And the other thing to keep in mind is, I am now talking at somewhere in the 70s decibel level, you know, somewhere, let's call it 75, 78.
Your voice has a tweak, though, that makes it more difficult.
It does get annoying after a while.
Yeah, it does.
I've watched.
I didn't want to say it.
So I guess where, where I'm headed is, although this is new construction, I understand why the request happened as explained, and that's where I am as far as supporting it. I, I don't think it's going to have a negative impact on anybody. I, I realize that there, that it's hard to find a hardship on this, but there's got to be a way that, you know, within our standards of review, that we make this work.
I, I agree. At the end of the day, I don't think there's going to be a negative impact on anybody. I think the sound will be amplified by the enclosure, and then it's going to bounce off that retaining wall next door and come right back and be in effect to the property owner who would rather have that noise than no power and everything flooding. But I still don't see the hardship, which is our criteria.
One of the criteria, right, yep. All right, any other comments before we move along here for a vote? Mr. Boyer, are we done discussion? Have you fallen off the fence?
I'm good.
All right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Chairman Dubby?
Chair's going to vote yes. So it's going to go 4-2 in favor, positive recommendation to the village board, and meeting's on January 8th, 7:30 in this room. I suggest you're there, just in case someone wants to pull it off the consent agenda because, you know, did we really justify it? But I, I kind of think it'll be on the consent agenda. Could one of you please come up and sign a letter for me and take the other one for your records?
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-C-47.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, November 7th, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Sherman second. All in favors?
Aye.
Aye as well. I'm going to open up the microphone to public comment. I don't see anybody running up to comment, so we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Total info, sports.